Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Counselor Casper?
Here.
Counselor Hinton?
Here.
Counselor Hoagland?
Here.
Counselor Kuss?
Here.
Counselor Mark?
Here.
And Counselor Parsons?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, I would ask for your permission to perhaps amend the agenda. If it's all right with you, I'd like to move item G, the presentations, up right after the consent agenda. If that's all right?
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. Then with that, I will go to the consent agenda, and on the consent agenda, we have minutes of the regular meeting June 10th, 2019. We have minutes of regular meeting May 13th, 2019. We have the Oregon Liquor Control Commission application for full on-premise commercial sales license for Besti LLC. And we have intergovernmental agreement for provision of dispatch and enhanced 911 services. Is there any thing that you want removed?
Mayor?
Yes.
Item number four, I need to recuse myself from that, so if we could, because my husband works for the fire department.
Okay, why don't we pull that off? We'll do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Number one, I wasn't here for the June 10th meeting, but I did watch it, so I'm up to date.
All right. Then I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the two sets of minutes in the Oregon Liquor Control Commission application.
Also move.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Counselor Casper. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay, hearing none. We removed number four, which was the intergovernmental agreement for provision of dispatch and enhanced 911 services. Does anybody have any discussion or motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement for provision of dispatch and enhanced 911 services.
Is there a second?
I second, could we add, though, with North Lincoln Fire and Rescue District?
Okay.
With a mover.
All right. We have a motion with a second to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay. And Counselor Kuss recused herself. All right, at this time, we'll go to presentation, if it's all right with our presenters, and welcome the county representatives.
Good evening, thank you for having us here. I know it's on. I am Commissioner Katie Jacobson with Lincoln County.
Wayne Belmont, Lincoln County Council.
And I'm Roy Kenyon, Public Works Director, Lincoln County.
So we are here this evening to talk about Logan Road. While I am fairly new to the county and to the commission, as my understanding that Logan Road has been a piece of property that Lincoln City has wanted over the last several years. I believe the county was really working under the auspice of fixing the road first with specific, a culvert, and then giving it over. But at a recent budget committee meeting we held here in Lincoln City, there was some public comment, both by someone from the city council, as well as some citizens, around really being able to take that road now. And so we are here basically to discuss the idea of transferring that road to you now with some cash provisions, allowing you to do the fixes of that road. So we have questions that Wayne can answer around process, and then Roy is here as well from Public Works to talk about the road itself, and sort of where that process is, and what types of things need to be done on it.
So Commissioner, thank you for coming. Does that come with just an open checkbook? Because that wouldn't be a problem, we could cut to the chase.
Well, we can certainly talk about the estimates that have been done on that. Roy has those numbers and what we believe it's going to cost to do that, so.
And I think he's actually shared those numbers with your staff. And that's obviously something we want to talk about, is what is the number that would be acceptable to get this thing transferred and move forward?
Yeah, we have not been briefed by anything other than the same, you know, budget meetings and previous discussions. We've got three new counselors. Part of me says, you know, take it up with staff and let them.
I think maybe what we're looking for is some direction from the council. Is this something you're willing to even entertain? You know, it sounded like when we were at the budget meeting, and in previous discussions here, this is something we wanted to move forward. We've had some issues with moving forward there, and especially because there's a lot of city utilities. And I understand there may be some issues you're even going to discuss tonight about utilities in that particular area, that maybe having that all under city control in terms of determining what to do and when to do it would be better. And we're willing to, we're willing from our perspective to do that, and to talk about what that would take in terms of a transfer of money. It's not unusual for the county, for instance, when we do arrangements with ODOT, then entail transfer of state roads to the county, for them to come to us, we discuss an amount, they transfer the road and a check. So this is something that we're used to doing on that end of it, so we'd like to make that offer. We're actually offering to sit down and negotiate that and put it together, if that's something you're willing to look at.
Can I say absolutely?
Coming from Ward One, I bet. Any other comments from counselors or questions or concerns? Is there any reason why you wouldn't be interested as a counsel to, because it has been a topic? Mr. Chandler, this might be wise for you to weigh in, because counsel would certainly be interested in getting control, I guess, but not at a financial deficit.
Yeah, it has been a, it has been a goal of the city for quite some time, I think it even predates me. I think it was part of the discussion when the roads area was annexed. There are some advantages to us obtaining that. Control of the road, for one, gives us the ability to do the projects, sidewalks, things like that, that we have discussed in the past. The central issue seemed to have been the repair or the fixing of the culvert. And we'll talk a little bit later, but we recently went through some experiences with that culvert over the weekend in our sewer line, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. The, in our, in some of our latest discussions, there had been some ideas that, is it possible to remove a portion of Salacy Drive to allow the water to flow more freely? I think those discussions, I think part of what we would need to do in our discussions with the county staff in order to know what the price would be, is to also know what is actually going to be done. I don't think you can estimate a price without us agreeing that this is the work that needs to be done to, to correct that situation. So I think that's your biggest hurdle, is just coming to that point and working with the county to come up with that.
So would it make sense for us to, you know, give acknowledgement and, you know, direct staff to pursue? And see if you can come to some kind of?
Sure, ultimately, sure. Sure, ultimately, what you would be looking at is that both staffs would be working on this, and then bringing back something to both of our elected officials, saying this, we think is a good idea, and for your approval. So yes, I think that would, I think that would move this forward to get it to a resolution.
Okay. Would, Mr. Belmont, Commissioner, would that, if we direct staff to sit down with your people and our people? And go from there?
That's great.
Mr. Attorney, that would be a motion to direct, would be advisable or consensus?
I think it's unanimous consent, if no one picks up.
Does there anybody have an issue, then, with unanimous consent to have staff sit down and bring something back to us? Something all right? We have it?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Could that be this year yet?
Yeah, that was good.
We hope. We're ready to come with a check.
I'm an optimist, I think.
Because, you know, in another week or so, it's a whole new fiscal year, so, you know, you'd be flush with money, I bet.
Well, we thought about bringing a big check tonight.
And just making an offer.
That might be presumptuous.
Roy's been kind enough to share with us his dilemmas, so, you know, we know it's not as simple as we make it out to be, so, thank you. But yeah, hopefully, you know, because we're definitely interested in, you know, might as well add the burden to us if we can find a nice answer.
And like I said previously, I think we were just operating under the auspice that you wanted to fix first, but it maybe sounds like that may not be the case, we're willing to kind of explore that.
Mr. Mayor, I would just add my two cents worth, thank you very much, this is very happy day, beginning step, and the sooner the better, so we can move forward with some safety measures for that road, for pedestrians especially. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for putting it on the table, coming north.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, then, why don't we then, back on our agenda, we have council deliberations. And as a reminder, we, last council meeting, we had the public hearing on ordinance 2019-21, actually, the public hearing, we closed that record and, or closed the hearing and left the record open until earlier this week. And then we're going to have deliberation now. Maybe Lindsay can bring us up to date.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Lindsay Zamel, Director of Planning and Community Development, here to give you a brief presentation, follow up with some additional information that was requested from the June 10th meeting, and assist you with any answers to questions you may have as you move forward with your council deliberation on this item. So a little background, just for those watching, that may not have seen every episode. In early 2019, staff was directed to begin working on the ordinance that allows, with compliance to state laws and codes, the temporary overnight sheltering of individuals in places of worship. The Planning Commission held a work-study session prior to public notice going out citywide on the changes to this. Public hearing with the Planning Commission was held on May 21st of this year, with the city council public hearing on June 10th. Just a brief summary of some municipal code definitions. A place of worship means a special purpose building that is architecturally designed and adapted for the primary use of conducting religious services on a regular basis. An accessory use or accessory structure means a structure or use that is incidental and subordinate to the primary main use of property. And an emergency shelter, under the Lincoln City Municipal Code, means a facility consisting of dwelling units, dormitories, and/or yurts, which provide necessary counseling services for 20 or fewer homeless persons for a period not to exceed 60 days. I just provided that because there was a lot of confusion early on in the question of whether a place of worship was the service that was provided versus the structure. Our code defines it as the specific structure primarily used for religious services. The Planning Commission held a public hearing, there was a large amount of testimony, and they, based upon the public hearing and testimony they received, made the following recommendation, to remove the 90-day maximum per year, as which was required under the Oregon Fire Marshal's Technical Advisory Memo. Also, to reduce the required square footage to 35 feet per person. In the original ordinance, staff had proposed a cap of 15 persons maximum in residential zones, with a 50 square feet per person minimum. The Planning Commission also added in the recommendation to place no minute, no limit, on the maximum amount of people that can be in any one location in an evening, leaning truly on that 35 square foot per person. A couple zoning districts, and just a brief summary of where places of worship are allowed throughout the city. In all of the zones, places of worship are not a permitted outright use. They must go through a conditional use process to assess the impacts of the structure and proposed use of the structure in the neighborhoods being proposed for. There are conditional uses in our R1, R1RE zones, as well as our recreational residential, our residential medium, our vacation rental zone, our general commercial, all of the subzones of the Nelscott Business District and Taft Village Core Zones, as well as our Ocean Lake Plan Zones. They are not allowed in any means or methods in our public, I believe it's public institutional, in our recreational commercial zones. I would like to note, as I did the analysis, the Taft Village Core and Nelscott Business District use the term religious institutions and houses of worship in a means to clarify, I've now identified a new code amendment I need to correct. But in my capacity as the director, if someone had requested an interpretation of me of the difference between the two, I would lean towards that as the same as a place of worship, therefore I've included in the matrix today. This, I have a little issues in learning curve in using MinuteTrack as I attached this spreadsheet to your packet, but I did go through with all of the zones within the city and pull all of the places of worship that we currently have permitted. At the meeting on June 10th, Counselor Hoagland asked a question in regards to, are all of these structures utilized as a place of worship? Maybe some are homes, maybe some are other uses that the church benefits from. So what I did, and I'm going to back out of my PowerPoint, because this does work a little better in the Excel spreadsheet I have, is I hyperlink, and I did hyperlink these structures to Google Street View. And if you got the accurate PDF or Excel spreadsheet from me late last week, you would be able to go through and see which addresses and recognize where they were in location to the city. Another aspect of this that I did is I identified three of the addresses that I was unsure of, and I needed to do additional information on. I pulled the permits for the addresses at 1465 Northwest 18th. It is, it was originally permitted as a church, and the primary use of the structure was for church purposes. I also pulled the address file for 1510 Northeast 10th, which is owned under the Coast Vineyard Christian. That received a conditional use permit in 2008 to convert a garage and existing single-family accessory structures into Sunday School classrooms for that church. And then I went to go find address file 1151 from Northwest Inlet, which is St. Augustine Catholic Church, and I could not find the address file in the building permits. I'm not sure of the age of the structure based upon the GIS data that I was able to quickly glance at. However, looking at the structure in it, it is operating as a place of worship. From a glance, I don't have anything to document or definitively provide for you for that, though, this evening. Let's see here, back to my PowerPoint. We did, thank you, counsel, for leaving the record open. We did receive one additional public testimony from Fire Marshal Ed Ulrich, dated June 17th, 2019. Mr. Ulrich's letter was provided in your materials this evening, since you have not previously seen that. And in his letter, he summarizes regarding his support for the proposal, as long as it adheres to the state Fire Marshal Technical Advisory Memos. I'd also like to personally thank Mr. Ulrich, as he identified that we were working off of a 2011 Technical Advisory Memo when we started the proposal, and he was able to provide us the most recent version. With that, I believe that I have wrapped up some of your questions from the last meeting. One of, oh, one concern that I realized in this spreadsheet, I speak of the interior square footage, and this information comes from our tax assessor records within our GIS database. However, that interior square footage includes restrooms and places, closets, other places that you would hopefully generally not request someone to sleep in. So I just wanted to keep that in mind and bring that to the forefront as we look at this, because some of these numbers can appear to seem really large and potentially impactful. That the council could consider a percent, a percentage of the total square footage of the structure, and then have other aspects related to that. I have the Excel spreadsheet, if you would like me to mess around with that, as we deliberate as well. That concludes my presentation, I'm here for questions, as you guys discuss.
Questions for Lindsay? Counselor, Mark?
Thank you, Lindsay. So as I read over the packet, I, well, it's pretty clear that, and I know that you stated it directly here, but the recommendations we received from the Planning Commission, we're looking at changing that pretty significantly. We want to return to the 90-day limit, which is required by the Fire Code. And in churches that are in residential zones, we would also return to the 15-person limit, whereas the Planning Commission recommendation opened that up to the 35 square feet measure. Am I reading, you reading that correctly?
The draft ordinance, actually, staff recognizes, based upon the testimony that was received at Planning Commission, that exceeding that original proposal of 15 per person max per evening, staff would be comfortable with a 20 to 25 per person.
But that would be?
But it is still asking the council to kind of trim back the recommendation from the Planning Commission.
I could review the council communication for the ordinance, if you like. There are, essentially, there was a description of what has happened, but there are six options set forth in the memo. And staff, as Lindsay just alluded to, is really recommending option number five, which pretty much strictly adheres to the memo, or the Fire Marshal's 14-12, the Fire Code. And the only difference is, is that we then have a 25-person limit in residential zones, and that is based upon addressing the comprehensive plan policy to mitigate incompatible uses with residential neighborhoods. And same policy that we used when we regulated vacation rentals. So, but I'll go through all six. The first one is, we could just say, you can't use a building as a shelter unless it's in our occupancy. That's, nobody's going to meet that, they'd have to come in and retrofit buildings, and that would be difficult. But that is one way we could go. We're not recommending that. The Fire Marshal's letter, really kind of, that was entered into the record after the, while you left it open, really clarified that the technical memo from the Fire Marshal's office is really just a compromise, an attempt to solve a problem, it's not an amendment to the building code or the Fire Code, it's just a recognition that this is happening, and this is the best way that they could address it. So the second option on the memo is, we could just not do this. We could just take, strike out the language about sheltering, leave in the language about adopting all the uses specified in the statute. But we, not recommending that either. The third option is, we could go back to the original language, which was the 15 limit. But you just basically updated to the technical memo, the most recent technical memo. We're not recommending that. We are recommending something pretty close to that, though, and option five has a slightly larger cap than option three. Option four was to, actually, option three has a 50-square-foot-per-person restriction, and so it's not strictly in compliance with the memo. Option four is entirely consistent and does not have a cap. Option five is consistent with the competent substantial evidence in the record, that being the Fire Marshal's memo, but imposes a cap to address the comprehensive plan policy. Option six is the Planning Commission's recommendation. It is updated to address the newer fire memo, and it is modified to remove the 90-day limit, and we do not recommend that. So that's, that's the summary. Again, option five is the one that is actually in the ordinance. If you were to take any other option other than five, I'll have to read that language per, if we do the readings tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If we, would those places of worship have the availability to have 15 cars parking there?
The, I would have, I, we do require parking standards for the occupancy that can be allowed within the place of worship for its regular services, that I would assume that there would be requirements, however, counsel could also, there would be enough parking for the churches that utilize this. But counsel could also put some parking standard regulations or concerns of parking in with the final ordinance.
Right, if you, if you say you can have up to 25, and you only have 10 parking spaces, and then one.
I do know that one of the agencies that's currently operating, they tend to bus so that there is not transportation impacts to these places of worship.
Other questions? Let me, hold on a minute.
Go ahead.
Counselor Hinton?
I just, I just wanted to say that in reading all of the options, I like number five as well. But I just was curious, the 90 days was not included, so is that something that we would not include, which?
It's?
I mean, just leave it open to accessory?
No, it's in the memo, and it's included in the technical advisory memo, so it is in there, because it's part of the memo. The memo is adopted by reference, the technical, the fire memo, and the fire memo includes the 90 days. I had, in option six, I had to exclude the 90 days, because it's in the memo.
So that would still be an option number five, then exclude the 90-day limit? I'm just wondering why we?
That is number six.
That would be option number six.
Yeah, I, we recommend option five, and option five includes a 90-day limit, because it's in the memo.
Okay. Sufficient, I guess.
Counselors, this side, have any, any questions? Judy?
Thirty-five square feet? What did the memo say, wasn't it 50?
No, that, actually, the Fire Marshal memo does state 35 square feet as the minimum. Staff originally proposed a 50.
Okay.
Doesn't the Red Cross also use the 35?
I believe Red Cross testified on July 10th, and if I can get back quick enough.
There was two different ones, there was one for an emergency and one for?
I think it was 40, it was a little bit more than 35, I thought. It was a little bit more than 35, I thought.
15 and then 40.
Oh, yes. So general population shelter for sleeping and feeding is 40 square foot per person. If it's daytime use only, it's 20.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I had a couple other things. Also during the Planning Commission meeting, there was reference to bicyclists, groups of bicyclists moving through town and spending the night and that's, so that wouldn't be allowed now?
It's, it's never been allowed and so that is overnight sheltering at a place of worship.
So it would be allowed if, once we pass this?
Correct.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure. And my second thing is just trying to understand the word used on page 48. I watched the Planning Commission meeting as it was happening and then I read the packet and then I went back and watched it again because on page 48, it said that the testimony provided by citizens at the Planning Commission was hostile. And I was trying to figure out in what way it was because I, I heard people stating their opinions and I did hear the attorney that was there and you could, you could kind of take that, he was speaking nicely, but you could kind of take that as, well, he's here to, you know, make his point, but I'm not sure that I would call all of that hostile. So I was just curious what, what you meant by that.
So I actually did not work on that council communication and I would defer to our Counselor Apicello.
Passing the buck. I thought it was hostile.
Well, you reacted that way, but I, I didn't see it. I wasn't in the room either time that I watched it, but I didn't, I wouldn't say that it was, so.
Counselor Mark? Counselor Mark, you had a question?
Well, yeah, I have a couple, just to that point, and it goes to kind of a broader concern which is, and a little disappointed that I'm not seeing church members here. Also, maybe not so disappointed because it, their, their reaction was, I would have called it harsh, maybe, maybe hostile's a little strong, but it certainly was strong. And what I missed at the Planning Commission and what we heard, it, to some degree from the Fire Marshal's testimony, but I, I think it would have helped had this city staff spelled this out a little more, is that the, the people that, the hostility came from people who were expressing concern that their First Amendment rights were being violated. And I think an explanation that along the lines of, this is the fire code we're talking about and you have a right to your freedom of religion, but you do not have a right to have an unsafe building. And, and I didn't really hear that spelled out in a way that I think might have quieted the concern.
If I can, I, to me, that's why I like the public process, quite frankly, and why these kind of things come through Planning Commission is because they get to take the brunt of things and misinformation and we then get the benefit of revised communique. And at the same time, in all seriousness, spinning it back better, clearer to the public because I think our public hearing that we had last meeting still had a bit of misinformation in it. And Counselor Mark, you, you tried to, again, clarify it at the end of it, which I think helps, and then this certainly makes it even clearer. So I'm, I like the process and I think that's why we all get the big bucks and ran for office so we could be in this learning process and, and help the citizens. So I agree with the observations, but I don't know how we would do it any better, you know, and we, at least in this process, get a second chance at it as it comes to City Council before a decision is made, so.
I still, I, I won't go into my whole speech which culminated in the Oliver Wendell Holmes line about freedom of speech, which does not give you the chance to shout "fire" in a theater and cause a panic, which, that case is 1919, 100 years ago. However, I did have a more pertinent concern. The Fire Marshal mentioned that the, he discussed the fire code that requires most church buildings to have exit signs and fire alarms and no smoking signs and he didn't mention this, but as I was doing my own little research, you know, there's a rule that says if there's a door that does not go to the outside, there has to be a illuminated sign that says "not an exit." And, you know, it all goes to his point that you've got people sleeping in places where they don't usually sleep. He also said, and this is a concern that I would very much like to see addressed, that smaller churches and older churches do not necessarily have to meet that code requirement. They're, they're grandfathered or whatever out. And it worries me that we, as I see the ordinance written here, that we would be allowing people to use those smaller and older churches to sleep in. And I think I'd like a way to exclude those buildings.
Maybe not exclude, exclude them, but exclude them, make sure they're included into the Fire Marshal, not, not give them the exclusion that the Fire Marshal letter would give them.
Well, well, if they could meet the approval of the Fire Marshal, it might mean putting up those signs or whatever it would take.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I agree that if, if you're there for daytime worship, you can see, but if it's at night and there's an emergency, there should be a higher set of standards for people who are sleeping overnight.
The draft language adopts by reference the technical memorandum and so it becomes, and it says it'll be, copy will be maintained in the Planning Department. So we could make it an exhibit to the ordinance and, and publish it in the code, but the places of worship will be required to have those exit signs. Whatever's called for in that memo is going to be required.
Except the point was just made though, that Counselor Mark recalls that there are exemptions in that technical memo. So we want to make sure that this ordinance doesn't allow those exemptions.
I think that the, the exemptions that Fire Marshal Ulrich were speaking to at the last planning, public hearing were in regards to the fact that if the building permits hadn't, had been acquired or the, the structure was actually constructed before some of these regular standards of building permit requirements for fire and...
Like the sprinklers. I, I think that some of them predated having sprinkler systems, for example. And that, I don't think that it requires sprinkling in the, in the technical memorandum, so that would be, yeah, you would have occupancy in a building without sprinklers, but I think requirements in the memorandum are, you know, absolute.
So can we just make sure though of, as we make our motions and footnotes, we're not...
Allowing that.
Yeah, we're not allowing that exemption, certainly exemptions from sprinkling and that kind of, but the signage and the, the most basic of...
Exit.
Yeah.
Fight a fire alarm.
That were... Counselor Mark, do you have anything else? No quotes.
No quotes. I'm done with quotes. But I, I think the, when I'm looking at that spreadsheet, there, the, under the 50-square-foot, there are a lot of bodies allowed in those buildings at 50-square-feet. I don't know why there would be any need to go to 35-square-feet and I, I just worry that we're inviting problems if we, I, I can't imagine that they would have that many people in there anyway, but, and as you said, you know, the...
Bathrooms and the closets.
Yeah, right.
So you say 50 and include the bathrooms and closets, 35 without. I mean...
There would be a simpler way to go.
Right.
Yeah, you wouldn't have to...
It is a maximum, right? I mean, this 25 number is a maximum number.
On commercial, that applies to residential.
Oh, okay, so residential it is, but on commercial and that's what you're concerned about?
Correct. So the spreadsheet in front of you, the yellow is the residential zone places of worship and the red above it are the seven commercially zoned places of worship. In the spreadsheet here, we have, it matches the cap that is drafted in the ordinance in front of you this evening with a 25-person maximum for residential zones and then an analysis of the 35-square-feet or 50-square-feet as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I do believe we had one testimony or one letter that came in earlier that had made a recommendation of about, I think it was a 50 to 60 as a cap in the commercial zone. From Patrick.
From Patrick. So Patrick Alexander did provide a written comment in between the Planning Commission public hearing and your first public hearing, which would be included in the June 10th packet. His comment or concern was the fact that our current allowances for emergency shelters only allow a maximum of 20 people and they're on, they're allowed in the general commercial zones. And so his request was to consider, I think, up to 40 or 50 and also request the council consider amending the definition of emergency shelter if we're going to allow places of worship to operate more than 20.
So that, that might be an option then of doing a cap on the commercial side and then you don't have to worry about getting the tape measure out.
Unless it's a real emergency and people are trying to, you know, then you have residents who are also trying to stay there.
There is one on the list that would only allow for 40 and if we're talking about the...
Well, that's residential.
No, no, no.
The yellow is residential and they're, they're capped at 25 anyway.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was reading backwards. That's right, excuse me.
They're, the Agape Fellowship, based upon the analysis of either 35-square-feet per person or 50, and this does include restrooms and, and closets, at 35-square-foot per person, they're at a 44 people. At 50, they're at 31, just due to the, the small size of 1,500-square-foot structure.
If you try to put 30 people in a 1,500-square-foot, I mean, it's going to be tight, you know.
That's why I think the 50 is, is plenty.
So are you suggesting a change?
I, I like 50, I would get away from the 35-square-feet. I like, I like 50.
So you'd, on the number five that we're recommending, you'd just change the 35 to 50?
I would.
Square feet?
If I were writing this thing.
I would support the 50.
The 50?
Mr. Mayor, is that a, may I ask a clarification?
Yeah.
That is within the commercial zone and 25 within the residential zone.
25 people within the residential, 50-square-feet.
Per person. Oh, 50-square-feet, not 50...
Yeah, people. So go a square foot in the commercial.
Oh, well, there had been, now I'm a little confused because there had been a statement, if we just make it capital at 25, then we don't have to worry about measuring anything.
Well, but I think that the point is made, I think Patrick made the point. Right now, emergency shelter is defined as only 20. So, you know, that seems inconsistent in the definitions, so, you know, it ought to trail with the same...
Intended use.
Yeah, intended use.
There is a, a amendment to the code that has been sent to DLCD having to do with emergency caches and because we're in that section, I included the definition of emergency shelter and changed this, proposed changing the 60-day limit to 90 days to match this. I did not at that time change the number of, from 20, but that language and the 20, the numerical 20, is in that proposed amendment. So it's just a matter of if you want to increase in, you know, commercial zone for emergency shelter, if you want to change that number, that's going to a hearing before the Planning Commission like next month.
So currently, it is maxed at 20?
In...
As the definition of emergency shelter. So it is a max 20 regardless of this.
An emergency shelter is not a place of worship under the land use code. So an...
You're using it as an emergency. We're not saying it's an emergency.
No, it's an accessory use to a place of worship.
It's just that there's an internal consistency that if you have a shelter in a commercial zone, it should have a higher number than an accessory shelter.
So the question I think we've posed is in the commercial zone, is it better to use a square footage, 50, or go a maximum body count? And, and what yours, you pointed out Lindsey is the, one of the churches at 50 would be maxed at 44, correct?
At 50, it'd be maxed at 31.
31.
I would, it'd be staff's recommendation that you have a minimum square footage per person, which could either be the Fire Memo's recommendation and a cap or just a minimum square footage and, but not at just a cap because we do want to make sure that we at least have that 35-square-foot per person to comply with the Fire Marshal, Oregon Fire Marshal memo.
The, the Fire Marshal's memo provides competent substantial evidence for the square footage number. So 35's a good number. If we want to address compatibility in residential zones, putting a cap of 25 is fine. If you want to address how large can this accessory use be, remember, it's supposed to be incidental and subordinate, in the commercial zone, you don't want the shelter use to take over the place of worship use. You could place another number. It's got to be higher. I think it screams out to be 50, not 50-square-feet, but 50 occupants. And so I, I would just, following the same track, since you've got a 25 in the residential zone cap, you can impose a 50-person cap in the, in, for the places of worship in the commercial zones.
And get rid of the square feet?
I would leave the square foot at 35 just because it's supported by the...
Keep the 35.
Fire Marshal.
Okay.
Yeah, how does that?
That works for me.
Is that sound right on the commercial side and do a cap of 50 and 25 in residential? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I, I still have a concern and I'm probably conflating a couple different things I've read, but this issue of the bicycle groups, I thought there was some question, I'm, I very much want to...
Allow them.
Allow them, yes.
Right.
On occasion, you know, but there is still the language in this number five that refers to emergency sheltering and I thought there was some concern I read somewhere.
I, I wrote it in the memo that, that one of the most alarming things about the Planning Commission was confessions of members of the Planning Commission that their church was being used to, you know, provide a place for people riding through on bicycle tours.
Which, which is not an emergency.
Which is not an emergency and it's typically not something you think of when you think of the faith-based religious activity of helping the homeless and the disadvantaged. It's not, it, you know, acting like a vacation rental or a hotel for traveling groups isn't a typical thing. At least it, it doesn't seem customarily associated with the religious activity. I'm, you know...
No, I disagree. I see that as a youth group activity and something like that. And if we're talking about two or three nights every six months or something like that and, or whatever it would be, I don't know how we get that language in here, but that doesn't bother me.
I, I would think that the hotel industry would have a problem with just a lot, you know, and there would be an argument against it, against that kind of two or three nights, you know, each group. I, I have no knowledge of this, but I'm just saying, there is another side to that, to where it's not emergency free stay.
My understanding was it was just overnight and then they were on their way again, like it stopped, not two or three nights.
Then they have people saying they were making breakfast and, you know...
I, I did hear that they were leaving usually about 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning from one testimony, I believe.
But I threw out the two or three just to be sort of exaggerate the possibility, but yeah, it probably is just one night.
Well, but it may be, you know, numerous groups too and I, and I don't think, I guess I'm surprised, Patricello, that, you know, I'm well aware of churches sheltering youth, especially youth groups, sleeping bags on the floor or weekend retreat or, or anything. So... youth groups, sleeping bags on the floor, or weekend retreat or anything. So I would share that same, whether it has to be youth, and I don't know what the definition of youth is, as I get older, anything under me is youth. So, but I would share that same concern. Somehow, we, you know, that fits into this ninety days that's already in this provision.
This is just for accessory use. This has nothing to do with emergency. So what, it doesn't matter, right?
Oh, well, yeah. That's a good point. And-
This is not, this is not for emergency.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a point of clarification of Lindsay? Within the definition that we have used for accessory use, would the youth or some other organization be able to house, most common one that I know of is Boy Scouts.
Yeah.
Would, would they be able to use, stay overnight, under the definition of the accessory use as it is presented in this ordinance?
As it's presented in this ordinance, I would have to pull, pull the ordinance, read it in front of me. I don't have it specifically. But I would say that the intent of the Planning Department has always been to not just be for those experiencing homelessness, but anybody that would have the need to shelter overnight in a place of worship, as long as that place of worship doesn't do it for more than ninety nights in a year.
Is there anything in the code for violations of the ninety nights?
Well, any violation of the code is a Class B violation. The only word that indicates in here is, it does say emergency sheltering, emergency sheltering, probably more because I wrote the findings and relied on the fact that it would be limited and it's only for this homeless use kind of thing, that I, that's how I perceived it. That's what it was. But even the language, emergency sheltering, if you look at it broadly, would cover any emergency shelter. Now, you could strike the word emergency and just say temporary.
Temporary sheltering of individuals.
If you call those bike riders an emergency, they needed to rest.
There's others.
So that would require some changes, not just to the changing the word emergency to temporary, but also getting into the findings and addressing that this is, the scope is larger than, I mean, you could talk about ninety days of bicycle travelers.
Probably gonna be, I would support that.
To just change the word, minimal.
You're gonna get too far down into it and it's gonna get blown up. Forget that. You know what I mean? Just open it up so that, if we have an open admissions to violations in, on testimony, I mean.
They're doing it either.
So just take out the word emergency, is that?
Or substitute the word temporary?
Temporary.
For emergency. So say temporary sheltering of individuals.
And so then at another time, we would coordinate or sync emergency shelter body count with this new, with this ordinance change?
If you want to, again, that language is already sent off to DLCD, but we can change twenty to fifty in the commercial zones, obviously should be more than twenty. If we make it fifty, that'll sync with the use here. And I'll, I'll go ahead and read the change to, just adding the words not to exceed fifty persons to option five, which is in the ordinance now. But I'll ask you not to do second reading tonight, so I can read all the places where I've changed it, including places in the findings where I previously referred to emergency.
Make a motion to approve first reading with a-
Well, I haven't done that yet.
Oh, you have to read it first, sorry.
But any other, any kind of questions, further questions? So, can we go back to parking? You brought up parking. And I guess I'm just under the assumption that that list of places of worship, to get a conditional use permit, would have parking. Now, I don't know that the sheltering in place that we're talking about have cars, you know, certainly the bike don't and homeless don't. So-
That's not, that's not true.
Some do, not all.
Well, some, but you also have some. You know, I guess what I'm wondering about, is that a concern area for park? You raised a good question. I'm just trying to flush it out.
I'm just saying, if there are people in Portland who know they can come down here and park their cars in all the churches and it's all right, then they might do that and not be messed with, and it's okay. I'm just worried that we're gonna open this up and it's gonna, I mean, it's, it's a real thing. Then what are we gonna do? You're gonna have fifty cars in seven different places. In town, you could have that. Let's say you could have that. Then what are you gonna do?
So I've visited some churches that have no overnight parking signage on their lots now, to be told. Isn't that the protection? I mean, wouldn't each place of worship-
Be discretionate if they want to do this?
Yeah.
Sure. I'm just saying.
No.
If they're on board and they're like, sure, you can stay, and it's now fifty cars there. Okay, you can doubt all you want. I'm just saying.
So I guess what do you recommend? Because I thought when you raised the question before-
I want to make sure that they're on property and that they're gonna, this is going to be held on their premises.
Enough parking for-
Not overflow in the streets and around the building and it's kind of there, and now it's on the grass and-
Right.
So just sort of thinking out loud, I imagine that all of these churches have occupancy that's much greater than what we're allowing.
Or they're normal.
Right. I have no idea how many parking spaces they have.
It's not one-
Didn't we pass an ordinance where we said we could allow five cars overnight and already?
Right.
So-
That's people living in their cars and in the parking lot, provided there's access to a bathroom and garbage collection.
But Council Hoagland's question is more the concern of the spill-off into the residential neighborhood and congestion, you know, adding to that and making sure that whatever level the place of worship serves can keep it on site.
Is there that included in this ordinance? Is this, is that addressed?
Well, there is a, we're talking about a twenty-five cap of twenty-five persons. So if every one of those people utilizing this service has a car, there could be twenty-five cars in the parking lot. In a commercial zone, it could be fifty.
Sure, but I don't know if those churches have twenty-five spaces, is what I'm trying to say.
Most churches have parking that's associated with the assembly use, which is typically a lot of parking.
So the municipal code, now I don't know when the last time this parking standard was changed for places of worship. But it specifically requires one stall per four seats or eight feet of bench length in the main auditorium, or if there's no permanent seats provided, one space per eighty square feet of floor area for the main auditorium.
So we're almost talking about, you know, we're at three times less space required per person for parking spaces. If we went with twenty-five, you know, square feet, I'm just worried that we're gonna load it up.
I, so it's, it's a common practice in the planning profession to recognize that a vehicle doesn't always carries just one. So I would challenge you there.
And I would, I would hope that we've learned as a community and certainly the places of worship, if they're gonna go into this kind of mission to begin with, that they would be considerate of their neighbors. So I'm, I have faith in the faith community. Thank you, Councilor Hoagland, for raising it though, because it's good to bring it up. Have we covered all areas for planning and?
Yes, you've provided some clear direction for us. And I think Council, Council Appicello is about prepared to write the revision, or read the revisions you guys have proposed this evening for consideration.
Okay, if you're ready, I'll do the first reading. Ordinance, this is first reading of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-one, and ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title Seventeen, zoning amending, Chapter Seventeen, Sixteen, single-family residential R one zone, Section Seventeen, Sixteen, oh four oh, conditional uses, amending Chapter Seventeen, Seventeen, single-family residential roads end R one RE zone, Section Seventeen, Seventeen, zero four zero, conditional uses, amending Chapter Seventeen, Eighteen, vacation rental VR zone, Section Seventeen, Eighteen, oh four oh, conditional uses, amending Chapter Seventeen, Twenty, multiple-family residential RM zone, Section Seventeen, Twenty, oh four oh, conditional uses, amending Chapter Seventeen, Thirty-two, general commercial GC zone, Section Seventeen, Thirty-two, oh two oh, permitted uses, and Section Seventeen, Thirty-two, oh four oh, conditional uses, amending Chapter Seventeen, Thirty-four, Nell Scott Plan NP District, Section Seventeen, Thirty-four, oh five oh, permitted uses, Table Seventeen, Thirty-four, oh five oh, amending Chapter Seventeen, Forty-five, Taft Village Core TVC Zone, Section Seventeen, Forty-five, zero four zero, land use activities, Table Seventeen, Forty-five, zero four zero, amending Chapter Seventeen, Fifty, Ocean Lake Plan District OP Zone, Section Seventeen, Fifty, oh five oh, permitted uses, Table Seven, Seventeen, Fifty, oh five oh, adding a new Section Seventeen, Eighty, One Sixty to Chapter Seventeen, Eighty, provisions applying to special uses to clarify place of worship accessory uses. On, on option number five, which is included in the ordinance, amend the second sentence, which to state, in addition, emergency sheltering of individuals and families in building and fire code compliant facilities is authorized temporary use, not to exceed one person per thirty-five square feet and not to exceed fifty persons. And for the next reading, I will change the word emergency sheltering to temporary sheltering, and I'll read every instance where that occurs, and I'll address any changes in the findings. So with that, I'd ask for approval of first reading and setting second reading for July eighth.
I'll move that we approve first reading and set the second reading for July eighth.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Council Hinton. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. We'll come back next meeting then. The agenda had two ordinances.
The first item was deliberations. The second item was the ordinance.
That's what I want to make sure. So then we are at public comment for citizens present. If I can, at this time, read a statement. Article one, Section eight of the Oregon Constitution provides, no law shall be passed restraining the free expression of opinion or restricting the right to speak, write, or print freely on any subject, whatever. But every person shall be responsible for the abuse of this right. Be advised, statements and comments by citizens under comments from citizen present or on public hearings or public comment items are solely the opinions and statements of the speakers and are not statements by the city of Lincoln City and do not represent the opinions of the city, its officers, and employees. With that, if someone would like to come forward and make public comment, Susan? Huh?
I'm here tonight as a member of the Quanis Club of Lincoln City. There's an event coming up this weekend. Pixie Fest was created by the Quanis Club of Lincoln City to commemorate Lincoln City's iconic Pixie Kitchen and Pixie Land and to celebrate the magic of childhood while raising much-needed funds to support the youth in our community. This year's Pixie Fest will take place on Saturday and Sunday, June twenty-ninth and thirtieth, from noon to five each day on the Mesa Athletic Field at Taft High. We've lowered the gate prices this year, and you can get tickets at the event or in advance at pixiefest.com. There will also be a cooking, oh, the cooking demonstration already happened, and we had a great turnout and raised lots of money for Quanis. We appreciate those who took part. At Pixie Fest, there will be games, rides, Louis Fox from America's Got Talent on Saturday, Presto the Magician on Sunday, and of course, the Captain Barnacle Show all weekend long. We hope you will join the fun on June twenty-ninth and thirtieth to help us raise money to support our local youth programs. Pixiefest.com for more information. I'm also still looking for volunteers. So if you have some time on Saturday or Sunday this weekend to help me out, I'd appreciate it.
And how would they contact you, Susan?
They can contact me at five four one nine nine two five five seven two.
And that, again, is Quanis, it's putting that on Pixie Fest, and it's held at the high school, Taft, seven twelve?
Correct. And I believe at pixiefest.com, there's also a place to contact us if you want to do it by email instead of phone.
And typical shift would be?
Eleven thirty to two thirty or two to five. So nice, short shifts this year.
And it's planning to be sunny, as it always is.
Yes, yes. But not as hot as that first year. That was one of the hottest days. It was in the eighties that day. It was too hot. It'll be nice temperate weather.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for bringing that forward.
Susan, what might the new reduced fees be, entrance fees?
I think it's six dollars for children and eleven for adults.
Oh, that's nice. That's reasonable.
Thank you again.
It's around there.
Anyone else that would like to make a comment? Come forward. Hearing none, seeing none. We already moved presentations then and have that. We have another public hearing. Call to order the public hearing as an opportunity for the public to comment on proposed changes to the citywide fee schedule as noted in Resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighteen. Would anybody care to make public comments? I see none. Entertained a motion to close the hearing and record.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the hearing and record.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second from Council Hoagland. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay, hearing none. We have now Resolution two thousand nineteen dash eighteen, a resolution of the city, Lincoln City, adopting revisions to the citywide fee schedule.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve Resolution two zero one nine dash one eighteen as submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Council Kuz. Discussion.
I had a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Don't know who to direct it to, but-
Let's do Mr. Chandler.
Okay. On page, packet page eighty-eight, line five fifty-eight, five fifty-nine, raising the septic handling fee, but there's a, a date on there for four years ago. Is this fee retroactive just for that year from now going forward? I was a little unsure about that.
Page eighty-one?
In five fifty-nine, you're looking at where it says effective five one two thousand fourteen to four thirty two thousand and fifteen.
Correct.
I will have to check on that. I think that should actually be, I think in my discussions, if I recall this, that is an irrelevant number because the septic handling fee of the fifteen cents in the five four, what it is, is the five one two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen, that's when- of the 15 cents in the 54, what it is, is the 51, 2014 to 2015, that's when the 0.1325 was adopted and it's just never been updated since then.
Gotcha.
And so we're proposing now to be 0.15.
Okay. And then, I had one more question. It was on page, packet page 83, under swim lessons. So line 268, to be exact, private swim lessons for one student seems to be the only thing that dramatically dropped. I want to know if that was a typo?
Which number again? Packet page 83, line number 268?
Yes.
I looked at 288.
Swim lessons, private, one student, used to be 80, 25. We're trying to put it at 30, 25?
That one I will, yes, that is correct because it's putting things, well...
For the, for the record, I know of a young man who had private lessons last summer and they were $30.25 because I paid for them.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're...
Yeah, that, that is a correct number and what they're doing is just trying to put all the numbers in line with each other, so that is a correct number.
Just wanted to make sure everything else seems to be going up and I dropped a lot.
Well, staying with that, if you go to page 89, packet page, and system development fees. So these are things that are dropping with years and I guess my question is, are these the system charges that we approved previously?
They are.
So it's just finally catching up on the paper?
They are. As a matter of fact, what you're seeing is something I've been trying to put together for four years and it just finally got to it. And that is a comprehensive, we've always had a comprehensive schedule, but we have not brought it to you for approval of it. And so this, we've tried to make this an annual thing. For some reason or another, we haven't been able to do it. So, so you have seen a lot of these fees already. This is just catching them all up.
One more, Mr. Mayor.
Let me keep bragging about these because these are significant reductions and I think should be noted and this goes on in our earlier attempt to break barriers and encourage development, especially in the housing arena. So, other items?
I just had one more question. On that same page, kind of new, what is the traffic impact fees? I see they're going somewhere new than where they're used to. Right?
Oh, right here on 622?
Yes.
It's ODOT's, that intersection?
It is. That's the north. We have an impact fee that affects the north intersection and I do believe that is what that pertains to.
And it's unfortunate that we are, we the city are the collector. It's ODOT's charge because they know they're going to have to do something with that intersections eventually and they're trying to collect money.
Is this the 101 in west?
Logan Road, yeah, that whole area there. Actually, it's that whole west, north part of 101.
Gotcha.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Chandler, can you explain the Bellhaven fee thing there and what that is?
Where, where are you looking?
569, page 88.
69, Bellhaven fee. Yes. Well, I will do my best at describing it. There is, there has been a sanitary district which has included fees for Rhodes End in the past. Those fees are continuing. We are simply calling them something different, which is Bellhaven fees. But there has been fees that have been associated with a Rhodes End sanitary district.
Is it the development called Bellhaven?
Come on up, Stephanie, and help me out.
I believe it's, it's coming from a condition of approval.
Floundering here, so.
I believe it was a condition of approval or the development approval.
Yes, it was because we, at the time, it was not annexed and we gave them water service for more than one lot. So they divided those lots and they paid us a fee per home toward the water. Well, naturally, that fee, those are the fees that go into a particular...
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing fund, yes.
So why would this fee be there now?
Because they're, they're not fully built out yet.
What would it be if they weren't in Bellhaven? What would this be, what would this fee be?
Well, now, it would be per house for a typical, it would just be a system development charge. This is on top of the system development charge because they chose to subdivide before they were part of the city.
So they're, they're, they're doing the residential meter rates and all that separately and this $1,000 is per?
Unit.
Unit of their development?
Yeah, per SFR. I mean, they have...
No, no, this is, this is an undeveloped lot. When they come and pull permits, this wouldn't be an additional charge because we didn't collect the money from the developer at the time he subdivided because we, we gave them more than one meter with the understanding we would collect it when each site developed.
How many more do we have? How long will this continue?
Until it's fully developed.
Until, I don't know how many, how many...
Sure, how many more are there?
I'm guessing roughly 20, maybe, 15, 20.
And to, all right, to the market that they built. Okay.
And it goes, it still goes into the affordable housing fund?
I don't recall. It goes somewhere.
Where's Debbie?
Going somewhere.
It goes somewhere.
I, I don't know exactly what the development approvals say.
I'll check on it tomorrow. Counselor, you had a question?
Couple of questions. One on page 85, number 400. Is it Kurtz's Park Individual Fields Private Group? Oops, go over there. It just went up $80. I was just curious, that seemed like a big jump compared to the other Kurtz's Parks increases, so...
You're talking about the 250 to 330?
Yeah, I am.
When Jeannie went through all of these, she tried to calculate them both in, looking at it in two ways. One is just simply inflation from when they were set before and then the other is actual costs associated with those.
Okay. Is, yeah, and then there was the commercial group, so that would be the same answer, 300 to 396, almost $100, 25% increase, okay.
And demand, I would say, market demand allows it.
In that, is there a cost associated, an internal cost of, the Dorchester Park costs the city X amount of dollars per year? The Holmes Road Park costs this amount, I mean, is that a number that you have? As far as what it takes to maintain all the, you know, the, all the...
Not off the top of my head, but yes, we have estimates of the cost of each park to maintain it.
Could you give that to us?
Two more questions. I have two more questions on page 83. Concession fee, it's number 297. $1,000, I was just kind of, that seemed a little high to me, but I don't know how this was figured, so... Especially because the interim, the daily fee is $50 and then the interim monthly fee is $1,000. Anyway, just seemed high.
Could you explain that whole thing? What would, what would you be doing to have that and charge that? What would they be doing?
If you were, if you had a parks concession?
At the community center? Is it at the community center or just?
No, we're talking about, like, let's say you wanted to sell hot dogs at the ball field all summer long. You could pay a $50 a day concession fee, but you know, that's gonna, that's 50 bucks every day. 10 days, you're $500, 20 days, you're at $1,000, 30 days, 1,500. So if you bought the whole month, you get a savings from the daily rate.
And the other part of this is that it's important to read the top part of it. Number 293, concession, city codes require 10% of the gross sales or a flat rate. So whoever is operating the concession stand can simply pay that flat rate of $50 a day or $1,000 or they can pay the city 10% of their, of their costs, or I mean, of their revenues.
Thought we went to flat rate.
We did. We added a flat rate mostly because a lot, some of the concessions, they're cash operated. It's, it's just an easier way to account for, to account for the funding of it.
I mean, I thought we dis...
Discontinued the 10%?
Yeah, discontinued the 10%.
We didn't discontinue it, we, we added a flat rate. So the language said 10% or if we establish a flat rate, they can use the flat rate. And what this is, is just another option for the flat rate instead of the daily rate. And this came from, we, we looked at Portland has some monthly rates and they're discounted in this way from what a daily rate would be.
Encourage the flat rate. Sure.
And then my last question was on that same page, on number 316, the locker rental for an annual large. In comparison to the other locker rates, it seemed to jump a little bit higher. So I'm just, just jumped out at me, that's all. It's $100 now and it was 69 and the other rates didn't jump to that percent, so...
Couple, couple factors come into that. First of all, new lockers that we're installing. Second of all, you're tying up a locker for an extended period of time that makes it unavailable for someone else and unavailable to collect revenue from someone else using it.
The quarter that you put in there? That you get back?
No, if you recall, in the budget that you adopted...
Closing that gap.
You recall in the budget that you adopted that the quarter will not be coming back.
I don't remember that, Mr. Chandler. Thank you for letting me know.
All right.
Wait, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On page 83, number 405, it says Nell Scott Deck. And then on number 417, it says Nell Scott Table and Event Space. Now, there's only a little bit of space in the Scott Plaza and I don't know what that's referring to, how it can have two fees for one area. And the tables are removable, they're like these two little round cafe coffee tables. I just wondered if it was a redundancy.
I don't, I don't see the two different, I see 405 is Nell Scott Debt, Scott Plaza Rental, which is the total.
Right, and then 417.
And then 406 is we have a fee per hour of $18.
And then look at number 417.
As a general, if you want the tables, it's going to cost you more.
What, two, two round? But the event space and the plaza are the same thing.
Yeah, I think that's just a duplicate.
Yeah.
And I don't think there are any city tables there.
No, there aren't.
They're in the process of picking some out, some durable furniture, but I think the tables that are there are probably some of the...
I think they belong to the coffee shop.
Coffee shop, yeah.
And they come and go.
I think it's just a duplicate.
So it's going to be one or the other perhaps maybe there?
All right, we beat that to death. We have a motion to approve on the table. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kooz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons and Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. All right, we have Planning Department, project update.
Thank you, counsel. I'll get out of your hair after this one.
You think.
So tonight, I just wanted to provide a status update for a lot of projects that we've been working on, but in advance of doing that, I wanted to introduce our senior planner, Anne Marie Skinner. She has been working diligently along 101 on one of the major projects we're working on right now, which is our sign code update. But before we go into projects, I just am really grateful we have acquired Anne Marie. Her and her husband are currently building their, their final home in one of our neighborhoods in town and she's been a great asset. She's picked up really quickly and I've been able to say, hey, I need this done and she just goes with it and so I'm really appreciative of her ability. She comes from, I believe it was about, correct me if I'm wrong, eight years in the local municipal governance with Caldwell Idaho as well as Washington County, Oregon. And then she went and was working on the private side for about five years doing large subdivisions and large plat adjustments for private developers. So we've got a well-rounded staff that really understands every aspect of the, of the planning realm, so...
Lindsay, I, I'm really impressed that you heard counsel when we welcomed you and one of the things we talked about for you to perhaps take a look at your planning department process of how permits are issued and all that stuff, but for you to be able to get Anne Marie to actually go through the process, I'm hoping you're making her stand outside the, that corridor, that big barricade you have and act like a real citizen and take, good, good for you.
Making her, I ask her to put on her private side hat all the time and say analyze this.
Thank you, Anne Marie, for being the guinea pig. Welcome to the community. Glad you're building a house.
You are most welcome.
We expect to hear your heartaches and, and...
You get five minutes at each meeting.
Welcome, yeah.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be here.
So moving forward, I've, I've got a little over a page here, but I'm going to run through this pretty quickly shotgun. If you want to stop and ask me any questions, feel free. We have a multitude of ordinances currently in the air that I've been working with, with our legal counsel, as well as economic development, urban renewal, and public works on a few things. The first one is our design standards. The public comment online closed today. We're awaiting final ordinance draft, the final draft ordinance from our consultants, which they've promised to deliver by the end of week this week. We'll be sending a notice to DLCD on July 2nd and that would allow a public hearing at the Planning Commission on August 6th and City Council either September 9th or the 23rd. Next ordinance we're working on is the sign code update. Per council directive, staff have been researching and preparing for a major overhaul of the sign code and that will be in front of council hopefully around the same time as the design standards. A few things that we've been doing in department, working on that, is senior planner Anne Marie has been out communicating with businesses along Highway 101 for the last two months in regards of existing, in regards to existing regulations that were recently adopted. And the upcoming work program for the major update to the sign regulations, giving out contact information, asking for input, trying to find out specifically what some of the biggest hurdles and concerns are from those businesses along 101. In addition, we've presented work on signs and the design standards to the Quanians and the Chamber in the last week and a half. We're awaiting an invite from Rotary.
Not president yet.
I'm currently reviewing the draft sign code survey and we'll be scheduling for that to go live to the public for a two or three week process here in early July. In addition, we're working on a draft ordinance that will also be noticed to DLCD on the same date of July 2nd and the Planning Commission public hearing will be scheduled for August 6th. The Planning Commission has held one work study on signs at their last meeting on June 18th and will be holding another work study on July 2nd. We have a third ordinance in the queue that is the dock standards processing of permits. Last year, the department threw an interlocal... Last year, the department threw an interlocal agreement, interlocal governmental agreement, Washington, Oregon, it's it means the same thing. We need to update our marine waterway chapter seventeen forty-four and update standards so that we can permit and process docks and overwater structures. We have sent the notice to DLCD already that is scheduled for a public hearing on July sixteenth with the Planning Commission and should be ready for council consideration tentatively for your August twelfth meeting. It's a minor edit, we're updating the marine waterway chapter and then we're establishing in each zoning district that is that surrounds Devil's Lake and the waterways within the city that it would be a conditional use process to get approval for development of the docks. Mobile feud units, we've completed our Planning Commission proposal and work studies on that. We're awaiting, it's currently awaiting legal review and we anticipate a public hearing with the Planning Commission sometime in September. Emergency caches and other ordinance, we're establishing a new definition and amending all zoning districts to outright allow the placement of caches without requirements of site plan and other district standards. This would be similar to the allowances that the city has currently for emergency communication towers. We're looking at a July sixteenth public hearing with Planning Commission and August twelfth tentative date for city council. We have the new flood plains maps from FEMA. We are mandated by the federal government to have those adopted and in effect in October. We've provided DLCD notice for those. July sixteenth again will be a public hearing for the Planning Commission and a tentative scheduled date of August twelfth with city council. This one is important to note, the city council, we're, I'm providing it to you on August twelfth to give you up until September ninth to make final adoption. The maps are defined by FEMA, there's no changes, that process occurred a couple of years ago when they sent the notice out to work on it. However, we are proposing some changes based upon conversations at the state level in regards to our flood plain ordinance and trying to establish a community rating system in coordination with our emergency management coordinator. And those both of those amendments could potentially reduce the residents' costs, excuse me, the residents' future cost for insurance. Development agreements, the city and specifically Rich, Mr. Appicello and I are working closely on establishing a process to clearly outline the use of development agreements for projects within the city. And so I plan to have a draft ordinance or draft proposal to send to DLCD again on July second, next week will be busy, with an August sixth public hearing and a potential tentative September ninth city council, depending on how long Planning Commission goes through with this. We also have an ordinance addressing a mixed-use land use designation that would be for North Lincoln City. That is also scheduled at the same time as the development agreements ordinance for August sixth and tentatively, August sixth with Planning Commission, tentatively September ninth with city council. Last but, well, actually, this isn't even last, but it's the last on my list, is the tsunami overlay. We received a grant for that last year to do a tsunami overlay zone as well as the work that was being done with the dogami maps. Working with DLCD and our state representatives, they have extended the contract for that and extended that grant, so our new deadline for this work to be completed will be June twenty twenty. It's my understanding that there's also some legislation legislation that is being considered by the state right now and potentially ready for signature by governor. And so we want to see what's going on with that and determine, see where the legislature goes with their laws before we start proposing our own. In addition, side note is that we do have an adjusted schedule for our assistant planner, Weston Fritz, who is focused mostly on VRDs at this point in time for summer. We have put him out there on Saturdays for VRD enforcement and being available to be out and about and see how things are operating. That means his office hours are reduced by one day a week. He is in office and available to the general public Tuesdays through Fridays, eight thirty AM to five PM at this time. That concludes my project status report.
Is there a reason you didn't talk about the villages?
Well, yes, because in coordination with urban renewal as well as our legal department, I've got a new name for it.
Oh.
It's North Lincoln City.
Okay.
But what we're actually working on is establishing a land use designation for the villages area and working on potentially removing it from the master plan villages, adopting what was presented to you guys on your, I believe it was the March eighth council with those parameters and the same consistency for future design and putting it into a comprehensive plan and making it a prescriptive zoning district instead.
And and what about the citywide comprehensive plan that Mr. Townsend before, who was so adamant of finishing before he retired and retired anyway?
Yeah, so as you likely recall, you approved some funds in the budget this year for me to go out to some, well, I should say next next year's budget, also known as next week, that we will be working with hiring some consultants and firms to be able to put all of the documents that the city has adopted over the last twenty years into a coordinated and effective fashion. So getting some of these things off my desk will give me some time to move forward with getting and navigating the consultant world on finding those.
Other questions down the side? Questions? It's great.
Okay.
It's nice to know you're not taking vacations this summer and, you know, there's plenty of work for you.
I I took one last week.
Thank you both.
Thanks, Anne Marie.
All right, okay, we have the city manager report.
Just when I'm going to come up here because I want to show you some slides.
Oh.
Join us. So if you'll give me a second to bring this up. and we wanted to talk a little bit about this in part because it's very pertinent to the earlier discussion with the county. This is this is the sewer line that broke. What's important is that above that sewer line is a culvert. That is the culvert that we keep talking about with the county. And one of the things we learned about this is that there's also a second culvert that sits underneath it and our sewer line goes right in between the two of them. The break, it was actually a split in the pipe, actually occurred right underneath the culvert.
Well, so what happened is at first we saw the break at the surface, we saw evidence. And so we started digging, the the flow sort of went away as we were digging, it got drier. So we got to the bottom, we realized that the flow had gotten into one of the two culverts, likely the lower one, so it's probably, we're guessing anyway at this point, we don't know for a fact, that there was some compromise in the integrity of that culvert, maybe some corrosion or something. So those, so the sandwich or pipe between those two, there was probably some settlement or something that happened that put that pressure on and caused it to be a break.
This is one of the reasons why when we talked earlier, it's important to establish what is actually going to be done to correct the issue before we start talking about price tax and how much money the city the city would receive. The next slide that you see is the opposite side of it. Again, you can see that where the culvert sits on top of it. What they did was that they had to cut the pipe in two locations. They had to cut it on once on both sides of the pipe, put in a new band and then connect it with the pipe that put it together. Now, all this is done in the midst of beginning with cleaning out sludge and that's where your our superback comes in, is is sucking all of that out. They also, in order to be able to do this, diverted the sludge from the pumps, from the pump station to get it around this area so that they could turn it off, leaving only the only the sewage that was in the pipe so that then all of that had to be sucked down. This is the split, that little brown spot is toilet paper, but that's the split, as you can see, it's split up along the, it's not just a hole, it's an actual split in the pipe. And you're looking at the when the pipe has been connected, this is what you see today. Okay? We did call a contractor in to help us with this, to to work on it. This is where the two culverts come out and this is what you see where it came out. Now, as far as cleanup goes, as of Saturday night, Sunday morning, we were looking at a couple of options that were available to us and we have received some pretty good news since then. We were looking at either just letting it naturally clean itself through the flow of the water coming out of those culverts and that would, they were originally estimating would be four months in which we'd have to have these signs up that says, I'm sorry, four weeks in which you'd have to have these signs up that said sewage has been flowing over this, or we could actually clean it ourselves and once that's done, then remove the signs and people could then play in the area again. And I'm going to let Stephanie talk about the information she learned today.
True, well, that was based on the understanding at the time that there was a lot of debris really that got hung up on the the rocks and the driftwood because we don't really know where that culvert daylight sits, a little bit higher than you see the actual water, the stream, when you start to see the stream come out. So in talking to DEQ, at first they're like, well, you need to spray it with chlorine, diluted Clorox mix or something to sanitize the any bacteria on the rocks and such. Since then, they've said, well, really, just go, we go ahead and because we found that the the flow actually entered the culvert and and so where it followed the stream, that it was more likely that the stream would clean it out. So we took samples today, as soon as they turn up negative, I think we have to have two continuous negative samples, then we can lift the signs.
So we're hopeful that all of this will take place before the Fourth of July weekend. I have to admit, I felt a little bit, as as Stephanie was explaining this, I felt a little bit like the mayor in Jaws, you know, that was saying, don't go back on the beach. But but it is good news from DEQ that we may be able to get this open without having to keep that area roped off for a month, so.
So I'm surprised that when you say clean it ourselves, or would that be flushing additional water down and trying to force it out of there?
And because Logan Creek is a waters of the state, they they decided, and when we found out it was really in the creek and not just so much on the rocks spilling over, we didn't really know how it got that down there at first. That's when DEQ said, well, let's just go with the flow, you know, treatment and we know it was in the flow, so we can we can tell if it's still contaminated.
Counselor, hitting it?
I just I just have a question. This is the first I've heard of two culverts, so did either we or the county even know that there were two?
Yes, now, the primary culvert is the lower culvert, it's the smaller, it's a twenty-four corrugated metal pipe culvert. And then the one you can see and expose is the thirty-six sort of on top of it and it's more or less an overflow culvert in case the flows exceed the lower one. When we were looking at this project with the culverts, we were pretty much focused on constructing one new culvert, weren't really looking at the fact that, yes, indeed, there really are two existing, but the plan now to replace it is just with one.
Would that be the lower, I mean, I'm just thinking about construction and how you do that.
Well, the plan right now is proposed by the county in in discussions with them, it's today to to bring it to beach level so that so the culvert would be under all of our utilities.
Okay.
Well under, yeah.
That's good.
Other question?
You said a few times, we don't know, and I and I and I don't like hearing, we don't know, especially when it's stuff that is, you know, our stuff. You said that you don't know how the sewage got into the lower pipe. Did you not inspect further how that sewage could have gotten to the lower pipe? How do you not know how it got in there?
Because we, to repair the pipe, we only went as far down as we needed to repair the pipe, so we didn't get to expose that lower pipe.
How much lower is that pipe?
Um, I don't know exactly.
You really stopped at like the pipe?
Um, well, yeah, because we, it's it.
Is that not CC?
Per plan, it's a couple feet, but we didn't go below the bedding, we just got that pipe out and replaced it.
Well, the idea was to fix the where the leak is and the leak was our pipe.
I I understand that, but the overarching is how did it get in there? So I just want to hear you say, no, we didn't go down further and we did.
We did not, we don't know for a fact. In fact, there's there's a, we can, we're still going to investigate, we can put a camera in those culverts and see if it's where or how it got in there, yeah.
That's the next thing.
Yeah.
We didn't know how the culvert, you know, where it even came out, you said we don't, we didn't know where it was.
Well, if you look at those, if you look at the photos back, according to the plan, it's it's somewhere mid, just, you know, about midway in the middle of the brush is Sal Al and and so our per plan is about a hundred feet out from the road toward the toward the ocean and then the culvert daylights, but it's hidden right now.
Sure, sure. And I and I understand, but as in as in also something, we should know where those are, we should know exactly where they are, don't you think? Or do you not think?
Well, the reason we don't is because those are county culverts and it was never ever, well, that's, this is the only culvert that is owned by the county and the city limits that we we know where all of our other culverts are. It's just so unusual that, you know, the camp, the culvert would even come into play with a sewer force main break.
Right.
We think they're related, we think there was some shifting. Again, we'll do some more, we'll definitely do some more forensics and try to get a more understanding of what happened.
And thank you, it's great. Do we test all of our, all of the culverts water currently in town? Do we have a schedule to test that?
No, we do not.
How how could that be something that one would like to bring up?
In their in their update for the stormwater master plan, which you guys will be seeing a draft of shortly, we have a big water quality section in there that bumps up our level of water quality right now.
Embarrassing.
Especially to the ocean, especially the outfalls to the ocean.
You know, and I want to know that we're testing that or that it is safe because it's our draw here and it was the anniversary weekend, you know how important.
I understand.
I know, I don't have to tell you, but I'm just would like to say, it is something that we do and we take serious. It is something and we're not just going to whimsy, you know, I just want to be able to say that to people like, look, it is, it is serious, it's unfortunate and this is what we're doing.
Right.
And I.
That's all.
Counsel, I I think we would agree with you that one of the problems, and not to make excuses, but you know, the this, and you've heard me talk about our infrastructure and needs and why it's a.
I know.
High priority, just because it's underground doesn't mean you can forget it.
It's good, right.
And this is a prime example of underground doesn't mean it's going to last forever.
Right.
And nobody tells us in advance that it's going to. And nobody tells us in advance that it's gonna break. And, and I, I don't mean to be, be flippant, but, but I guess kudos to a quick, you know, be able to shut the thing off and, and get on it and that kind of stuff. But, but I, I agree with, I'm appreciative of what we're doing as an organization of funding capital improvement with more money. Even, even though we take heat as electeds. And this is the sewer system that we're trying to build.
It's more than sewer system. I mean, it goes into
Exactly.
What the city is. I mean, to say, oh, luckily, it was 18,000 gallons or whatever, you know what I mean?
Thousand.
It wasn't million, 18,000?
One thousand.
Oh, one thousand, okay.
We, we have to think.
It wasn't millions. Do you know what I mean?
Right.
Right. So, thank you. I mean, really, and it's just so that I can better, you know, talk with those people that are like, what is going on? You know what I mean? Because it's, it's a real thing. And you know, and you know. I know.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just have a comment from, from someone in the neighborhood checking out, you know, what was happening there. And people were disregarding the sign and walking on those rocks anyway.
Right. Well, I mean
You can't, you just can't help some people.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
I have a few other things.
You have a few other things? So the next thing I have is just an update. There's been quite a bit of interest on our preparations for the Fourth of July. In particular, the fireworks. Wanted to give you, so last Friday, I sent you some information on our Keep It Legal, Keep It Safe campaign. I want to give you a little bit of an update. We have a total of nine runs that we're doing through our social media campaign. We have run three of those. To date, this primarily has been through, well, what I'm gonna be talking about now is through the, our Facebook campaign. We have served 222,066. That means that's the number of accounts that have seen our advertisement. Of those, we reached 87,345. That means of the 222,000, 87,000 paused to look at it. They, there was some time in which they were looking at our advertisement. Of those, 87,3053 were engaged. That's up from 1,658. That means they did something. They reacted to it. They saved it. They forwarded it on to somebody else. They clicked it. And of that, 3,053, 2,126 clicked it. Which means they went from there to our webpage. And the webpage is the fireworks instructions. Since Friday, that's up one, from 1,162. So we're pleased with how that's going. That's again, after three runs. The cost per click or the cost for the, someone going to our webpage, right now is 78 cents. By comparison, our spring campaign that ran in the month of May was $2.42. So we're seeing a pretty good reaction to that. We're also getting a few good comments on, on our webpage. Some of them fall in the, in the right, that it's our constitutional right to blow up things and things like that. And so it's always a little bit fun to get those. We also have several things that are coming up. This is all lead into really what I will need to ask you about tonight. And that is future work meetings. So we have quite a bit that is coming up in the month of July, some in August. Right now, the Seles Bay Music Festival is going on. We've already heard from Susan Walkie that the Pixie Fest is this weekend, which is June 29th and 30th. The Otis Music Festival, which has also had quite a bit of interest in calls that we have received, is June 28th and 29th of this week. You have the fireworks over Devil's Lake, which is July 3rd. You have the Independence Day at Seles Bay, which is July 4th. You have Haunted Taft Moon Tour, which is July 16th. Just as a note, we also have the Oregon City and County Managers Association in Newport, which I plan on attending, which is July 9th through the 12th. You have a joint meeting with the County Commission on July 10th. You have a joint meeting with the Confederate Tribe of Seles Indians on July 15th. We have, in which I think a couple of you are involved, a debriefing on the fireworks on July 23rd. On August 1st, we, you have a meeting with the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments. So there's quite a bit that's on our agenda, on your agenda for the next about five weeks. We'd like to try to schedule some work meetings, and I'm trying to figure out how to do that and what's the best way to do that. Some of the topics that we have are, the, the first one that we would hold is on Lincoln City's waste stream or trash stream, plastic bag ban. But that issue has been dealt with, and so it will be much broader than that. We also wanted to have an update on some ordinances that Ms. Ravicello is preparing to give you a little bit longer time to, to contemplate those before they come to you. We have our Capitol Projects updates and specifically some planning discussions as it pertains to our infrastructure. Included in that is a presentation from the city of Newport about their water planning efforts. We want to give you a tour of the police building. As that gets going up, they're pouring the walls now. And then we have some on emergency preparedness. So we've got quite a bit to discuss with you. I just need to figure out when you guys are available. And I guess the first question is, should we try to schedule something in July or should we wait until August?
Can we do like a, let's cover four of them in once? Like, for real, like spend like six hours?
That's up to you.
I'm asking, I mean, for real. I mean, it's a lot to do. And if we do it in one day, why, I mean, we come in in the morning, spend, you know, spend the day. I mean, on a Saturday or something.
But you're the only one that works for a paycheck in this room.
Me?
Yeah.
I can make it happen.
But no, my point being, the rest of us can't hang around for six hours. We're two hour, you know, blocks.
We got a lot to do and not a lot of time to do it.
Ah, yeah.
For real. I will make you guys food. I will cook for you. I will make pizza. I'll do tacos, whatever you guys want. I'm serious. Like, for real, we got a lot of stuff to do. And to do two hours, six times, is gonna, it's really problematic.
I could do four hours, two times.
Yeah, I, 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 let's max it at four hours. If, if you could, I, I would, yeah. He knew, he knew we'd negotiate down.
Cover two topics at a single council mentor, a work meeting, cap it at four hours. Two, maybe even three if we can get to it.
Yeah.
And like what we did at the
Retreat, yeah.
Or the, I'm sorry, the college.
Yeah.
Would you like to try to schedule something this month?
Yep.
Sure.
Okay. If you are looking at, if you are looking at the month of, or Mondays, you would be looking at July 1st.
What about Saturday?
Or July 29th. You're booked on the 8th, 15th, and 22nd. If you're looking at Saturday, we could accommodate, we could accommodate that and do that in the morning.
I'm up for the 29th, I mean.
Up for the what?
Saturday.
Yeah, I, I would do it.
Is it enough time, though, to?
Four, four hours? That's what we did?
No, no, no.
Oh, to do any of the, for staff to do your material, their backup of?
Well, if you look at, well, as I'm looking at my calendar, you've got the 6th, the 13th, the 20th, and the 27th. You can just pick one of those and we will work to, to meet your, your schedule.
I can't do the 13th or the 27th.
How about the 6th?
The 6th, Friday?
From Saturday?
Yeah.
Six.
Six.
That would work for me.
We're talking mornings?
Morning. Morning. We started at eight o'clock last time, do the same thing.
Monday, what about Monday and Saturday? The 1st and the 6th?
First might be a little bit difficult for us to prepare.
Too tight to get the stuff?
If we went with the 6th and then looked at, if you wanna look at a Monday night, it would then be the 29th.
6th and the 20th?
Or you would do another Saturday if you wanted to.
I'm on the, 29th is all right.
That's fine.
So the 6th and the 29th then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
8:00 AM on Saturday and then
Literally this Saturday, the 29th?
No, 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 no.
No, Sa- July 29th, I'm sorry.
Monday.
No, true, uh, yeah, Monday is the 29th.
And we'll be here?
Uh, we will be here.
We don't have
What time?
We have been doing that at 5:00. Do you still want to put it at 5:00 or do you wanna try to do it earlier?
Earlier.
Can we do it in the morning? Like, if it's a Saturday in the morning?
No, the 29th. 29th is a Monday?
July 29th.
The earlier, the better.
Take the day off, Riley.
Guys, no, I'm working all the time.
In the past, we've, we've scheduled those at 3:00.
About 1:00.
We're here working. We can have any time you'd like.
I'm really open. I just am saying, like, let's get it done.
Why don't we just do it to the four hours in the afternoon and not, yeah, 1:00, 1 to 5?
1:00 on the 29th, 8:00 AM on the 6th.
Yep.
So it's 8:00 to noon on the 6th?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm just, is the 6th, any difficulty on if staff needs to do something and there's the Fourth of July in there?
No, we'll, we'll, we'll make it. Some of the, much of this, we've already put together. We'll make it. For example, on the waste stream, I've already got material to give to you. It's just a matter of scheduling. These will be in a work meeting format, which means we'll have the tables up, and we would not be accepting public comment.
Are they videoed?
The public, of course, is invited to attend.
They'll be videoed?
Uh, yes, they would be videoed.
Mr. Chandler, I know, looking at the Newport, you mentioned that in their water slash dam. I, I know there's a counter group or an additional group forming that wants to revitalize the Rocky Creek reservoir. That might be a, if you want, if you wanna get drowned yourself in water issues in one day, might be.
The issue that Newport, I just got an email from their city manager. If you recall in the budget, you approved some funding, however you qualified it, saying you gotta come in and explain. They're ready to do that. And so I'd put that on for the 29th. That's all I have, Mayor.
Sounds good. Where are we gonna have these work sessions?
Here. Here, just in this room.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chandler, on the fireworks, I, I was delighted to see a big sign down at Josephine Young Park. And I noticed it says, no fireworks at all. It's not just legal.
It's a state law. That's correct.
Okay. I was just wondering, is there anything, like, if somebody wanted to wear a bright vest and stand there and just sort of talk to people? You know, sign, something on the back that says, keep your, you know, no fireworks, fireworks. The, the, I don't wanna get involved in, obviously, the chief's job, but if
That request actually came up to us on Friday. And I have passed that on to the chief and he, and he is looking at the idea of working with CERT to do that very kind, very thing. And, but I, and I'll get back with you on that as, as he has a chance to talk to the organizations.
That's why, I was, in years past, I'd asked if we just stand at the beach access and say, hey, this is who I am and the responsibility that I have, and no, that can't go down there.
We have learned from some of our residents that if you do that early enough, it works well. If you wait and they get about three or four beers in them, then it's not necessarily a good time to engage them.
He's trying to fight, yeah.
Well, I, I was at a, oh, Salashan's been doing these outdoor concerts and they had somebody walking around. And you can buy alcoholic beverages there, but there's a big sign, the OLCC doesn't allow you to bring in your own alcoholic beverages. And there was a fellow walking around, the T-shirt said alcohol monitor on the back. It sent a little message. He didn't have to actually talk to anyone. That's kind of what I was thinking.
Chief's working on that and we'll let you know as he has a chance to develop that.
So, Mr. Chandler, I'm assuming, like most Facebook posts and stuff, that it's worthwhile for us all to be sharing our Facebook set how it gets to a broader. And for you old folks that don't know how to share your Facebook posts, you know, you can check with my grandchildren.
Mr. Chandler, if I could make a suggestion is those, if the city isn't a part of those local discussion groups, the city's Facebook page, if there's a way to post insight, I mean, I know Mitch and I repost a lot in, in there. But it's always good if like the city, you know what I mean?
Okay. I'll have Courtney contact you so we know for sure.
I mean, we tried it. We, I know Mitch is great at it, so, but
Yeah, I argue with everybody on that.
He's great.
Okay.
So do I.
Thank you. Mr. Ravicello, you have anything? I, I get that, I know, I'll get to it. I just wanted to get these guys out of the way. We do have one item. As you may recall, on our budget item, we have the nonprofit committee. It used to be outside agency requests. Usually what we do is appoint like a three-person subcommittee to go through the applications and bring back recommendations to the, the full council. I don't recall who was on it last year.
For the last two years, it's been Ms. Hinton, Ms. Casper, and I.
Oh, you three old ones, huh? So, um, yes. What I
How about Counselor Kuz?
Is there any interest in the new counselors of being part of said committee?
I'm interested, but I think I would rather just, I, I connect with an agency that's applying and maybe I should just
Actually, I have the same issue, 'cause I'll have to recuse myself, 'cause there's an agency.
I don't know anybody.
Good.
I currently don't have.
Yeah, right.
So, you know, Mitch and Diane, if you two, and then Deanna or Judy, would one of you?
I'd do it.
Or Riley?
Judy.
I, I'm okay with letting it, with, back out. I mean, I, Ms. Casper's, I mean, really on it this.
Okay. Well, why don't you, if you don't, you, you to my right, could act as a subcommittee, go through the applications, and then make a recommendation to council? And just, when you're ready, let Cassie know, so you get on the agenda.
When do we have to notify recipients? Is it August, Mr. Chandler?
It is, and it towards mid, about the third week of August, we give out the checks.
So it'd be good to have, you know, if you can't do it by in the next two weeks, you know, at least the 3rd, the second meeting in July would be a good time to approve them as a drop dead date, then we can cut checks for August.
Are they all in right now?
Yes.
Deadline?
It's a shut off time.
$236,000.
And Mr. Mayor?
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
All right, you three can go with that.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment. I already have a copy printed out by Courtney that I would pass on to one of the three for this year, if anybody wants it.
You have what?
I have Courtney printed out an entire kit, let's call it, for the nonprofit work. Anyway, I have that with me and I would give it to the one, Diane raised her hand. Okay, it's taken.
Okay.
Mr. Chandler?
Yes.
Should I appoint a position, or is it just that voice?
It's just a appointed position. I'll exert, I'll exert my executive authority and, and as I look at my attorney. Okay, speaking of that, actions from executive session, public gotta know, we had, did a performance review on Mr. Ravicello, our city attorney. to know, we had, uh, did a, a performance review on, uh, Mr. Ravicello, our city attorney, uh, we certainly agreed that he meets job standards, we had a, uh, good discussion, uh, as it typically goes, of sharing our thoughts, um, on things he can do more of or keep doing, and other things that we wish him quit doing, um, and by gosh, he came back at us as well with similar, uh, cit, yeah, uh, asks. But anyway, we're, we're pleased with his work, thank you very much, Mr. Ravicello. Um, you want to, this is where it'd be, a good thing for you to say you're pleased to have the employer you have?
Yeah. I'm pleased to have the employer, though.
We'll write that script for you?
Thank you.
All right, um, any, no public comments? Sorry, everybody left, and it's only eight o'clock. Uh, Joe, I assume you're okay? All right. Now, how about comments from counselors? Counselor Diane, you all right?
I'm all right.
Welcome back from vacation, you know? Judy?
Nope.
You all right? Mitch?
Nope.
No.
Hey, I like this timeframe, I hope you stick to it.
Deanna?
Yes.
Great.
I'll make my Neighbors for Kids pitch.
Okay.
Neighbors for Kids, which, uh, provides, uh, in the summertime, full day, uh, daycare for sixty to seventy children a day, at very modest fees, um, they depend on, uh, foundations, charitable giving from foundations, and from local residents, uh, to make that affordable for parents, and their big fundraiser of the year is coming up July twenty at Chinook Winds, at the golf course at Chinook Winds, the golf tournament, so I invite people to take part in that, and if you don't have anything better to do with your pocket change, help, help some kids out, and, uh, Neighbors for Kids.
Hector, I've already signed up for that golf tournament, so, thank you very much. Counselor Hoagland?
I have two things, I was brought to the attention of the Nell Scott Strip parking arrangement, um, the business owners there are finding it, um, very problematic, and they feel like they're losing business, because, one, they can't park on the inside, on the, I suppose, the...
The median there?
Yeah, they can't park there.
Or they never could, but...
I, I know, but that's, this is a big concern, and so I just, I said absolutely, I'll bring it up, and, you know, they feel like they're really, in the mornings, they're just losing business, and so, what, even though there's the parking around this, I hear you, but it's a big thing, and they're even willing to, like, pay for, like, re-striping or something, so it's, it's a big deal for them, very serious business loss is how they feel.
Mr. Chandler, at one point, we, I thought the we, being the broader we, including ODOT, maybe it was just the city, um, where we were trying to do a deal with the Eagles to, um, have additional parking there for Nell Scott.
Right. I kind of just dropped off. Yeah, 'cause I know there's the one parking on Thirty-second, and then around on Thirty-fifth, but it, but still, that front, if they see those spaces, they go, they shoot out, and maybe they don't know that you can go to the, you know, down to that parking lot or not.
But if we could, you know, somehow, because it's the trouble with the median, is backing into the cars that park there.
I, yes, absolutely, and I expressed that, and it's like, well, that's, there's a reason, yes, Ms. Casper.
Counselor Hoagland, I was also approached about this about six months ago, and the businesses wanted that median to be painted yellow, because the trucks, the, the food trucks or whatever come there and park, and you can't back out, and so that was the first concern, I'd heard about that, but I've never heard about them wanting to park there, so that's another...
Sure, the parking situation at the Nell Scott, what are those things called? When you slip through, that little?
Frontage road.
Yeah, frontage road, yeah, so that's that, and then the second, um, has come from the real estate industry, in that the city of Lincoln City and the city of Toledo are the only two in the county that win the house, that have outside billing for their water and sewer, and so with the sales of a home, it's a lien on the home, and it further complicates the process, so it was asked of me to bring that up, is that we have a third-party billing, that it's a, it's, when the home is sold, it's a lien, and it's, it's a complicated process. It, if there's a bill at all, if it's forty-two dollars, fifty-two dollars, it's still a fifty-two dollar lien on the home, and so it makes it, um, problematic for those in the city.
So, I, so you're, I don't know what the issue is, somebody hasn't paid a bill.
Because we have an outside, we have a third-party billing, in that it's, when the sale is there, it's a lien against the home.
Clear the lien through escrow.
Yeah, well, yeah, what's... I, I underst, I understand, but we're the only one, we in Toledo are the only ones that do that, and so it's, it, it does complicate it, I, I'm just bringing the, hey, hey, hey now.
What do the other cities do to guarantee payment?
Yeah.
That they don't make a lien on the home, I, I don't know, I'm just bringing it forward, that this is, this is the situation, this is the problem, and this is...
So, that's why you pay at escrow company, it's right there at...
Escrow has to pay for, that, it's a...
Just write a check!
Okay, it's still a third-party billing, and it's still a...
Sounds like we're making issues.
It's, it, it is an issue, absolutely.
I think we're making them up, but...
I, well...
Not, not you, who's bringing them to you.
I don't, I don't think...
Your industry. Could you share with us, 'cause you, uh, you had a new assignment that you were eager to?
I did not yet, participated yet, let me come back, I, I understand, I understand, but I will.
But you know, 'cause I can't remember, share with, the council would be, I'm sure, what you do know about?
It is, we are, there's an organization going to make a hiking trail from north to south, and there's a section in town that is, this group is the Oregon Coast Trail, and so, participating with this, I'll learn more about what they would like, and how they want to have this complete from north to south, so, I haven't gotten too much into it yet, but...
But I'd, I'd ask Riley if he would mind stepping in, since we know he gets lost on trails.
I do.
And it would be helpful to, you know...
I, I hundred percent do.
I know. Thank you for doing it with, the other, if, if I could, uh, 'cause that was one of the ones that, uh, thank you, but also Depot Bay, um, on July sixth, so you guys won't be able to participate, at nine AM, they're having a, uh, a salmon clipping, uh, where you clip fins, these are hatchery fish, ha, ha, hatchery-raised fish, and they fin-clip and then release, and so it's kind of a family-friendly, um, type of thing you can do, uh, volunteers are needed, nine AM, at the Depot Bay City Reservoir, uh, and it's an annual fin-clipping event.
The clippers.
The clippers. I, I had neither, it's...
Family fun in Oregon.
Family fun, on a Saturday, you will be working.